Twenty twenty two. And so if everybody here was there, we'll see. So and number two is welcome.
I will start with staff.
Oh, so. Is this a fan?
This is your line.
That's really fun. Sort of commission. That cash be my mission. Then our zoom members.
Gil Morrison, planning commission.
He's he's there. Dave, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, the audio is very quiet. If you're asking for me, Gabe Bernstein, planning commission.
Thank you. And then item number three is. The issue. Yeah, yes. So number, item three on today's agenda is audience comments. Are you here to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, guys, how about to buy your copies and state your name and address?
My name is Paul Fano. I address six twenty two kids out of three. Well, I think you guys are doing good work here. A lot of things I could say. I didn't want to bring up last Saturday. I don't know if you guys saw it right down here. Thank you. We had a nice Christmas gift to get to thank. That was what's happening. I live nearby, so there's where you can get to. Right on down and see everything that's happening. But I also think it afforded us the opportunity to see something really special about Florida, and that is what can happen on Bay Street when we restrict access to all the deals, which seems like a pretty scary prospect to a lot of people, but because of marching band that was downtown that night, they shut down the road, cars, right? And as I recall, saw a lot of people frequenting not only a lot of the festivities that were going down, going on downtown, but also, you know, frequenting the shop that over there. I was one of those people going across the street, going through the street, and there wasn't a single shop that was open that night that wasn't packed with people. And I'm pretty sure that the people who were low shots kind of were quite happy to see that. Even the new shop, getting doughnuts, I got obvious at the end, so I would say something for a lot of people. But, you know, when it improves to us generally that foot traffic would generate revenue, not cars, car path, especially among most of the weekdays you see and even most of the weekends we see. A lot of cars passing through Bay Street, kind of restricting access to a lot of the traffic. Of course, we want to see a mixed use future. I know that's part of the plan that you guys laid out so far. I also want to see that, but it's not going to happen as long as important places like Bay Street and other parts of Florida are specifically dominated by public construction. You want to see a large increase in revenue, a lot of large increase in traffic, it's going to be foot traffic, it's going to be public transportation, anything like that. Or dominating the area, it's just going to be a run out downtown issue. So, all be said.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. So next up on the agenda is item number four, approval of the minutes for November first twenty twenty two. I move to approve November first. As day four.
I was just making sure there was nobody online that else wanted to call a comment.
Oh.
Check.
There are no. We have enough people here for the minutes. So I'm going to need a second.
All second.
Oh, I was just going to say maybe for you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? All right. Our next up business item is for a public hearing on the twenty twenty four Congress and Plan update and the public participation plan.
Do you mention this department community development? Staff introduced the draft of public participation program for twenty twenty four Congress and Plan of the Day at last month's meeting. Corrected the entity to create the collaboration on C step and our consulting. Program outlines the different elements to be addressed in the Congress. I have a few methods and tools that will drive our update. All of those professional materials properly, notice consistent with the requirements. People will see if they find a second. Additionally, staff put a three social media posts and group in public participating. Related program voucher on October twenty eighth, November first, and December sixth. Staff also provided email messages to an email list related to longer planning regarding the program and tonight's public hearing on October twenty second. November twenty ninth, and this says the draft public participation program was made available via the city's website on October fourth. As of this evening, the Department of Community Development has not received comments regarding the public participation program. One note, staff will add grand old king, set fellow associations to stay open for the program. Or if it's outside. At the conclusion of this evening's public hearing and public commission, planning commission, program and planning and provision for the student public project.
So this time I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to comment?
Public announcement.
Regarding the public, on the conference.
It's the public participation program, or it's unimportant.
Okay. All right, so this time we'll close the public hearing.
I will.
I'll mute yourself.
I unmuted on Zoom. I'm not to do that.
Okay. Then I need to pull this. I need to turn that one on. Okay, I move to recommend that the city council approve a resolution adopting the twenty twenty four Congress and Plan update public participation plan as presented. Okay, as a motion maker, my comments on this are that it was a, I thought it was thorough. It was met all of the requirements, and I particularly enjoyed finding out that the planning commission will be having public hearings on the various chapters of the board. I think that's, I think that's going to be an important goal for us. But we appreciate that. And that's all I have to say about it. I, I thought it was fine. Any comments on Zoom? Please. Oh, that's just the mouse. So we have a motion and a second. Is all those in favor?
I am.
All those opposed? So you're going to postpone the temporary signage for tonight? The it's not letting me move forward.
Issue with this item. We've done an origin from planning. That staff was a nuisance that was dangerous temporary signage. So over the course of the next couple of months, staff will create that, or they will come back with some possibly skip something related to, pardon, something related to temporary signage, possibly early twenty twenty three. So this evening, there's, there's really no need for discussion except that you should know that we're.
Yeah. And so our next item on the agenda is a discussion for the housing action plans for it.
This is really just nothing for the planning mission. Our work on the city's housing action plan is underway. It's part of the plan of the city's, but the housing action. Why? We've been impacted. We are providing that flyer to the city building customers as part of the billings, the billings, the billings. Staff has also provided social media, email applications and survey. On what government side, as of this summer, the, the O D H R has several responses. Interestingly, sixteen of those responses occurred to him on November twenty second. This just happens to be a takeover. Staff finds additional offerings mid-winter, spring, summer, utility billing cycle. Based on the initial responses, about eighty-two respondents so far home, while approximately sixty percent of Florida's population are homeowners. Income of the survey respondents is pretty distorted, and most respondents live in the suburbs. We will continue to gather more feedback over the next month and a half or so, consulting by recommendation to the council on January twenty, we should be able to produce most of the survey results. In the time being, please feel free to take a survey in one of the supporting. Feel free to show the survey with those you think may be interested in working out. Staff intends to provide updates and planning mission. Once the survey is closed and we receive some initial information supporting, then updates of the mission is likely in the winter.
Any more comment? I'm in. No questions, or do we just?
It's up to you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, but rather? Okay, so we're on. Indeed, discussion and development activity presentation.
Sorry.
Did you want to, is that you that's going to do item D?
The presentation.
The development activity presentation.
Yeah, sorry about that. Let me share my screen here. I'm going to give this presentation through Zoom and should have a copy of the presentation in your packet. I'm a Vegas ski marks. All right, so at the last planning mission meeting in November, Commissioner Bernstein mentioned that he was seeing a lot of development around town and would like to know what some of these projects are. And it just so happens that the day after that, my mission meeting, I went online and Google just provided a brand new aerial photography that showed all the things that have been happening in the city over the last few years. So we have updated imagery and the Kitzat County Park Village tool also is updated with more recent aerial photography. So we have some, some good imagery showing what is actually happening on the ground and potentially see where clearing and development activities are. And we supplemented that with images from various permit applications as well as a couple of photographs taken on the field. So this presentation is really just to take you around the city and show you what's happening. The, the cover page here, we don't actually have a, a permit for this site yet, but it'd be driven down Melcher from Sherman and Pottery. You'll drive by this new clearing and there's a lot of down there and all kinds of data. This is the future development site. They got a permit to clear the site, but they haven't actually applied for permits to, to build. The the first area I really want to focus on is in McCormick Woods. We're going to go counterclockwise around the city. And if you have any questions at any time, feel free to stop me and ask me about something while it's up on the screen. McCormick Village is the area of McCormick, McCormick Woods area, north of Oldwood, between McCormick Village Park and Biggie Road. The McCormick Village subdivisions, there's currently four phases under development. Phase one is this area to the northwest of the site. There's eighty-four lot and all of those have been issued building permits. Nearly all of the houses are complete. Phase two is Jason's McCormick Village Park and is home building. It just commenced, and I think there's five or six homes started out there of sixty-six total lots. And then north of there are phases three and four, which are not yet recorded lots. They're still putting in infrastructure, stormwater pipes, water sewer and streets. And I would expect that that final five will make its way to the city in the spring of twenty twenty-three, so that they can begin building the houses shortly thereafter. The other area to focus on in this map is, there's a road that runs east-west here, southwest Yarrow Street. And the area south of Yarrow is the the mixed use and master plan area of our McCormick Village sub area. And so we did some planning, we adopted some area plan about a year and a half ago to master plan this area. And McCormick has applied for both the commercial development permits for the, the twenty thousand or so per unit retail space they planned, as well as the first half of the residential subdivision containing about one hundred lots. The the whole neighborhood is, is set to be very walkable. The, the housing types that are provided are going to be a little bit smaller than your average home, so it's giving you more of that missing middle housing type that is, is really critical these days in terms of affordability. A lot of the houses will have accessory building units built at the same time as the house. We're actually getting two small units per lot rather than just one single house. And the streets aren't being set up with doors, and those are the Dutch word for a shared space where pedestrians and vehicles use the same area, a very low speed street where we drive at five miles an hour. But there's no dedicated sidewalks. It's just a very refined arrow street to cut down on the curvy surfaces and encourage walk, walkability. Those things are close together. We have those, those middle streets. So that, that is moving forward, and we are excited to see that hopefully red ground in twenty twenty-three. South of Old Clifton, the McCormick West, now known as McCormick Trenos area, is under development. There are four divisions under construction totaling right about four hundred lots. The first two final classes have been recorded, that's divisions eleven and twelve, which are along the east side of the main Loop Road through the neighborhood. The areas west of that Loop Road are still under development and should receive their final class at some point in twenty twenty-three. So a lot of new home building going on there. You have five different home builders active in that area at, at various price points. There are approximately, after this first phase is developed, there are another one thousand and seventy additional lot of this area. Plus closer to Old Cookin Road, there's a future of a track that could if you're retirement housing or multi-family housing, it's somewhere a little bit higher than Steve. Moving on to Stetson Heights, I think most of you are familiar with this. It's been, a project that's been ongoing since they applied in twenty fourteen. Phases one, two, and three have been recorded with final, or one, two, and four have been recorded with final class. Phase three is supposed to go to City Council for approval one, one week from tonight. And a new phase called the Stetson Ridge Project was just presented to the hearing examiner, and I believe we received a decision, a decision approving that subdivision here just within the last week. And so it's a total of four hundred and twelve lots, and most of the area has road, water, sewer, is, is ready for home building. Phase one, I think nearly every lot has now received the building permit and has a house being built on it or, or occupied at this time. Moving on to the Stedwick and Sydney intersection, we have the Sinclair Apartments, this is phase two of the Sinclair Apartments, phase one being just to the south and west of this area. These buildings are actually a little different than what's out there now because they include ground floor, good work units where you can actually have a business and live in the same space. So you might have the kitchen in your bedroom in the back of the unit, and the living room actually be set up as a, a commercial office for retail. Here's on whatever, whatever your trade might be, it's a way for you to work or home and actually have a workspace that is public based. This site also includes a small coffee shop, a, a gravity coffee drive-through location on the northwest corner. Moving further north on Sydney, we have the Haven Apartments, the Haven Town Homes. And this is an opportunity for me to mention that in early January, you, you should have received an email from me. The last couple of days, we're going to be having a really good idea to tour of this project for planning mission at city council. So it is being advertised in the public or unnoticed from the clerk's office, but I believe it's January eleven at eleven a.m., and we're going to get a tour or maybe to see the new supervisor station that this project built for us. But the, the apartment project is two hundred and thirty-six apartments. I think the first three or four buildings now have a certificate of occupancy and the remaining buildings are still being finished. And then across the street on the west side of Sydney is another hundred and fourteen units that's part of the same developer, but a, a separate project, and they have another hundred and fourteen townhomes. The, here's the images of the finished apartment complex. They do have this great, great building with a swimming pool, gym, shared spaces and kitchen. And so a really high level of amenities that you, you don't see in most apartment complexes in Florida. They also were required to make some pretty significant improvements along the front of the project, put in sidewalks, apartment line, bike lanes. And so those will tie in nicely with the rest of the sub area that other properties develop as kind of the, the standard that we're looking at at East on North Side of Ruby Creek. And then I mentioned the Haven Town Home Project. This is the site in the west of Sydney. And those permits are an issue. They're planning on picking them up in January and break the ground as we get a little bit closer to the screen where the, the rain slows down and begin the dry season. Heading to the east side of SR sixteen, we have a couple of subdivisions off of the Blueberry and Gider roads. The Blueberry Ridge Plaid, which has been redeemed as Magnolia Ridge, contained a hundred and six lots, one of those approved. And every one of those lots now has an issued building permit. A few of those houses have now been finished and are, are being occupied. So that one has really moved very quickly from final block to full buildout. The Gider Plaid, a little bit further south on Gider Road, I think there are four or five homes starting at this time, that they're, they're being a little bit more cautious in terms of how quickly they are building houses, as it seems. And I would expect both of these subdivisions to totally go out within the next year or year and a half. A little bit further to the east on Stedwick, closer to the Fred Meyer and Vettel, there's a site, I think, the bad news in the audience tonight is, is company is working on a coffee shop. We're going to drive through this phase one, and then there is a, a retail and multi-family mixed use component that is a, a future base. And so they did break ground on this project, I think, in August or September, and are, are, I believe there's a building permit in right now for the, the coffee shop. It's probably a lot of safe devices. Starbucks, either those Starbucks on, on Stedwick. That's a recent photo of a construction site. You can see Fred Meyer in the background for, for twenty two. And then this is one of the renderings of a building, the mixed use building, showing the, the retail space and the, the multi-family units. It's, it's clothing, like they did a good job talking to the apartment unit, the middle side of the lower building and stepping the building down with the, the train. A little bit further to the east on Stedwick Road, we just completed the pottery, create apartments, I think, in, in February, and they are fully occupied. And they have a second phase that has applied for building permits and is likely to be permitted early next year. Immediately to the east of that site from the image here, right? We can see the, the green outline of the property. That is a second phase with a hundred and ninety-two more units in addition to the hundred and thirty-six that have already been completed. The next project at the intersection of Blueberry and Vettel is the Blueberry Apartments, it's a hundred and eighty units. They have applied for building permits and a land stripping activity permit for their, their site improvements. They are designing with with our, I'm not quite defined, the city is actually designing around about a hundred, thirty and Vettel. And so you'll notice that they kept their building out of the, the area that we're going to need for the right away. So that, that you'll be seeing right away, or roundabout construction, I believe, in twenty twenty-five if everything goes according to plan at this time. Off of Salmonberry, we have a handful of projects. First of them is called the Hidden Hills Apartments. Currently, that's proposed at a hundred and fifty units, and they have their allowed permit in for review. They have not yet applied for their building permits, but we are getting close to finishing the review of that, that permit and expect to have a decision on that early next year. Also on, oh, this is actually just the landscape plan. It's broken into two pieces. It's a little hard to remember it yourself, but it, it shows there's kind of a narrow piece up on Salmonberry that has two apartment buildings. And then the road, once it winds into the site, there's some wetlands that have to be avoided. And there's a second area that opens up a little bit more with more amenities and additional apartment buildings. The other projects on Salmonberry are a little bit smaller. There's the Salmonberry Apartments, which is twenty-eight units. This site actually ties into the Home Depot site, which Home Depot had permits years ago, and when this was Kitzat County to build a store. We had the great recession, and they decided not to go over the project at that time. Home Depot is back and they're working on their weapons reports. And so this site, this apartment is actually going to dedicate a secondary access to Home Depot. So it gives us the parallel circulation network through Walmart and to Kathy where the Safeway is, which helps take pressure off of Vettel. So that people that want to go from Walmart to Safeway or Walmart to Home Depot are not coming out of the Vettel and causing congestion. So that's, that's one of the major benefits of this project, though it is a, a smaller apartment project. A little further east on Salmonberry, the Thimbleberry Town Homes project, this is twenty townhomes. They, they already built the first forty units. We have a mining site planned in under review right now, which is going to take away from the and this is another project that started in Kitzat County prior to our annexation. Recession came, this project sold out and all the permits expired. And so getting this re-permitted, given that all the codes are different now than they were then, it's been a real challenge, but I think we finally figured out a path forward. A couple of sites north of Lund along Vettel and off of Carroll. We have the Ridgeview Apartments, the Riverstone Plaid and Contra Apartments, a hundred and thirty-six, thirty-nine, and twenty-four units respectively. You are seeing two of these sites that have been actively being developed since the summer. That's our Riverstone and Ridgeview. I think, I think Ridgeview is an apartment complex. Riverstone is a subdivision that is a Kitzat Housing project. Our House of Kids that project is the builder on houses, I think, like what we had on Melcher. And so I assume that one will build out, the house will get built a little bit more slowly over time. And so I assume that one will build out, the house will get built a little bit more slowly over time as they find people to, to participate in the program. And those people have to put in their own sweat, I believe, to contribute to the, the construction of the townhome. The Contra Apartments is, is the green part of all highlighted in the second image on the right. And the nice thing about this project is it actually is going to create a connection from Harrell back to Lund. So that the traffic from that neighborhood doesn't have to go through the main Vettel Lund intersection. It's kind of an outlet for those folks to get onto to Lund and over to Tremont, I would say, without, without going through one of our local intersections. On, on to Mile Hill, we have annual projects there. The, this is the Clisco Apartments, which is next to the Public Store, near the high school baseball field. This is a fifty eight unit apartment complex and they started construction this fall. And so that is progressing. Further up Mile Hill, we have two sites, one of them, north of mine, that is the Overbrook Apartments. It's actually phases two and three of the Overbrook Apartments, phase one will go back in twenty seventeen, right behind Movie Theater. They're making some pretty major improvements to the road network about a year ago. Anyway, there is, there are massive, major offsite improvements to all the people who live up there. Are getting sidewalks and new boupee street improvements between the apartment complex and essentially Mile Hill. To create a better walking environment, to help mitigate some of the traffic back to Walmart complex. And then the Pizno Apartments is next to the Taco Bell on the south side of Mile Hills. It's a fifty seventeen unit apartment complex. That building is just about raining down. I think I drove, last time I drove by, they, they had roofing sheeting on, but have not, she goes on the roof just yet. So I, I would expect occupancy on that project towards the end of the fall. Finally, a couple of projects downtown that are fairly exciting. The Karen's View mixed use project is, has applied for shoreline substantial development permits. This is a hundred and seventeen apartments, some live work units as well as retail. And this is located next to the Fried Chicken at Vettel and A Street. And so a good looking building with good views of the water. And it's in a location where there aren't many people who are going to have to use block five, a taller building to get people in, across downtown without. Have spirit impacts. And then finally, four twenty nine A Street, this is the old night pass restaurant for Cheers. And it's thirty nine apartments with ground floor retail and then there's the ground floor parking at Great. Unfortunately, because of this being at sea level, it's hard to go below ground for parking. So the only place for cars is at the service, but still it's a good mixed use project. It's close to downtown, it gets people living downtown, sort of helps interchange us in the city. And so the permits have been issued on that one, the, the major sticking point right now is there's animation there for a previous building station. And so the builder is trying to officially, the, the human company about cleanup and liability and all those sorts of things you have to deal with. So that is the conclusion of the presentation. And if there's any questions about any of this stuff, I haven't answered it. I did, the city council saw this on the twenty, twenty second of November. They asked me how many, how many units were included in the presentation and it's over four thousand. Housing units, which if you take our household numbers, it is about ten thousand people that potentially be housed by all of these projects. That's a significant chunk of growth for the city. I don't know. Everything is in this presentation, other than maybe one or two projects that feel pretty confident or are going to happen at some point. With the time we're doing what it's doing right now, some of these may slow down or, or possibly fall apart if they don't. Anybody that's on so far as applying for building permits has real, has really made an investment in that project. And I think once you get to that point, usually these things go over to completion. Well, I, I think a big reason for that is that in the state of Washington, there are liabilities with developing condos. And rather, you don't see a lot of new condos, so we have multi family, it's almost always an apartment. Sometimes later in, in the building's life, they can give a condo conversion. Because you don't have the same sort of liability when you per apartment to do a condo versus when you build a new condo. And then you have a bunch of owners that suit it up or doing something correctly or think there's a problem with the project. So it, you know, I, I don't know that it's, yes, the part, the multi families buildings that we're seeing are mostly low mobility units. But it has a lot more to do with legal structure in Washington, because the market world, what, what type of world of.
I mean, why is Port Orchard like a magnet for apartments? When you get a place like Good Harbor that has more nice houses and, and like, I don't know, people that invest in the community, very good people that are just kind of.
Yeah, the, well, I, I think number one, the regulations in other cities may be more strict. We, Port Orchard was pretty early in adopting little housing policies compared to other cities. I think we took a pretty innovative approach to revising our code in a way that, that quite all that's intended on just a single family or all that. I think that the building codes that have been adopted by the state really steer people into either a single family house or garden apartment style housing. Because just the cost per, per, of building various housing types. And so it's really difficult to build sort of in between either low rise and cash housing. You, you really have to achieve economies of scale to make these projects pencil. But yeah, I think in Good Harbor, number one, they don't have nearly as much available land as we do. We, when Port Orchard annexed, huge area, the Smart Mine was an area back in two thousand eight, two thousand twelve. We took in a lot of undeveloped land, it was relatively black and became critical areas. You don't have those types of sites in Harvard that are easy to come up. I think once those sites disappear, we'll see all that every house is still around quite a bit. It's not a lot of them. You have any questions? I'm, I met with the owner of, well, weeks ago and I think they're mainly working on. For the people company. And so the last email that I sent based on a shoreline permit kind of, they would need to start properly in early twenty twenty four, the latest order to complete the project before shoreline permits expire. But it really depends on how long that project actually takes to build. Shoreline permits are needed in a day. It's not going to start the project, it's what finish the project, it's important because once the permit expires, you have to shore it up. So if it is an eighty month project, they need to look at their permit expiration, they should have started to expire.
Nick, thank you for, for that. It makes me feel much better knowing what's going on and hope we can get these done every time or two a year.
Yeah, we'll try to keep this up as things change and it's, it's always helpful when you have good photography. Putting names and numbers on the picture.
I just have a question. And it involves some of the projects we saw on the west side of Vettel that was going on in off of Blueberry and all of those developments in there. Where does Ramsey Road sit in our transportation group?
So right now we have a, a contract to design Vettel Phase One, which includes the Ramsey Road design and right away acquisition for that project. So Ramsey Road, there's a disconnect in the right way where we actually don't have a legal right to go through, although there's a, a restricted use and just have to have a judge recognize that. So we are planning on cleaning up the, the right way and acquiring the right way that is needed to make that a complete street. And then Ramsey Road will temporarily become a two lane or three lane structure on Vettel. So we'll be running the traffic down Salmonberry to Ramsey and then either out to Stedwick or, or back to, back to Vettel along Blueberry. And that, that of course, I think most of you probably heard this, but the, the city council a couple of months ago passed a one tenth, one percent sales tax measure with the intention of funding the first phases of the Vettel project. And so I believe that, that sales tax measure takes effect early next year. We hired the company to design the project and our target is to fit that in twenty twenty five. Hopefully we can find some grant funding to, to help that project along. We'll be applying for several grants for the years and it just doesn't score well. So we're, we're, you know, the project has to happen on various others. We're, we're moving forward. The possibility of funding it now to get some grant money somewhere to, to.
Would that make it a, a, or a thing, Rob?
Yeah, it's, it's, so I mentioned when I was talking about the Home Depot site. Our corridor study for Vettel really emphasized the need to improve parallel road networks. So that bypass traffic isn't coming out on the Vettel. That allows Vettel to be a two lane road, except at the roundabouts where it opens up the four lanes. So you get a place for buses to pull over and stop traffic and it's kind of a right turn slip lane. The, the cost of making Vettel a four lane road versus making it a two lane road, a roundabout. So it, it's set up so that it can be widened in the future between roundabouts and roundabouts will be designed as four lane roundabouts. So it's, but our traffic model shows that it will, as a two lane road, provide those parallel road members exist. Which is why it's so critical to get that Home Depot approval while we're in Salmonberry.
So it's, it's, I think it's good that there's a lot of more, you know, other single family homes, or detached single family homes being built. Of course, other than R one and R two, so many that's been, you know, mostly built for over the years. I think there's a few things that need to be kept in mind whenever we do these projects. One being, of course, that will these projects be sustainable over that point in their viewpoint? Will they be able to pay themselves off of tax rate, right? A lot of these, you know, separate developments come up, not only in Florida, but in other towns across America. Where they get built and then twenty, thirty or forty years down the line, they're not able to enable their own infrastructure. Power lines, things like that. And then design a building more, you know, putting common work force, build force. But I think it's important to know that rather than just this constant new extension, we should be more focused on kind of bringing that, bringing a better use of the land we currently have in this area. Is that a little better? I think it's a lot of quality and solar, almost, and very. All good in that direction, but then again, my opinion, a project like Stetson Heights, which is kind of adding to that expansion, adding to that growth. Really, in the long run, will just succeeding, loving up traffic more and more. But the second thing I think is important to keep in mind is a general planning, when we're doing projects as well. To where how will these neighborhoods or how will these new apartment complexes or single family home neighborhoods or however they are? How will they generally connect to the city, right? How will these people get in and out of the city? How will they be able to access the inner, in the city? And will it just create a, will it be created by, so along Salmonberry or Vettel? There was a number, I saw in the presentation there, a number of housing projects that are going up. And I see a lot of those housing projects will be looked at pretty much far away or relatively far away. That have to profile from different amenities of the quarter. Obviously they end up in the end of the day driving to town, right? So you end up with more traffic loading, that sort of gases there here. But so that's, that's kind of the priority going forward. It should longer sustain over, right? It's kind of longer than I've been after, so I was throwing that out there just so.
So is there any plans for like, besides all the housing, like restaurants or store, other than Home Depot? Is there, are we giving more? I mean, I know a lot of people don't even shop here. Because it's not having restaurants or stores and. Yeah.
Well, I, I think as a, a general principle, commercial development typically follow residential. We, we need more group apps and more customer base in order to justify business expansion. And so I think is, if you're seeing this boom of residential population here, as commercial needs follow. One of the challenges of developing mixed use buildings and it's, it's happened to see how to do. I think I know in Montlake, Terrence, where they build, they're building one of the light rail stations. Ten years ago, they put in mixed use development and those commercials basically sending people for, for years before they can buy a tenant. And so usually it's the residential development that is subsidizing the ground part commercial. Because you'd have to reach this critical mass and create a demand and get people that have it going to live in here and shop. So we are seeing a number of commercial entities approaching us. I know that the city is actually, we're negotiating a purchase of some property off of Sherman. Kind of the end of the, the Sydney area around sixteen. And we're buying that from a family who also owns the property over on Bravo Terrace. They're currently negotiating to sell some of that property, it sounds like. I, I have no idea what the partial user is, but there's a partial user company. Presumably moving up to pursue. I mentioned Home Depot's coming. The Fried Chicken has a new location that have come, we got it downtown next to Taco Bell, Vettel. I was going to come to us. I know the South Cape Town always be sold and they're, they're really, they're really good. But the size of that building, they're talking about trying to figure out how to get some classy retail into that existing apartment lot. So there, there is, there is much more interest now than there was when I arrived at the city nine years ago. I think there's very few, very poor spaces at this point. It's, it's really easy that the population numbers need to grow of all of this development over the next few years. I think we'll see a lot of commercial developers. Yes, Starbucks too.
I was wondering if they're, probably apartment, what they pointed. Is there, is there a room to like to do kind of like what Good Harbor has, like uptown or something, something that's kind of classy?
Yeah, well, I, I can, I mean, we're just getting into the twenty people conference, I'm not saying, but we have been talking about, there's a, the McCormick East area where you come in off Glenwood to the backside of McCormick. Which there's an area that was long, uh, here, probably three years ago now. We're talking about designating that a possibly a future center that kind of have a, a more retail based site on Glenwood and transition into the residential backside of McCormick. But it would potentially be a draw for people to live out or develop here coming in on the flow and be a little bit more proximate to people in McCormick Woods, so that they're not driving all the way to, uh, Ross County to speed and, uh, big traffic with that. So I think there is the potential to do something on that side of McCormick Woods. We're talking to that property now and we're trying to talk in and finding some very. He's probably looking into it. We have some super issues that we have to figure out. We are, we are kind of designating that, or at least talking about designating that in our plan as kind of a future center planning area that will, we're not going to plan it now, but we are going to designate it as that sort of feature. I think that's probably the biggest area. There's a couple of pieces on Vettel that has the road, which is going on. But right now the infrastructure is so poor in Vettel that I don't, I don't think anybody's putting money to invest money into commercial without, I think residential is a little easier.
So the apartments that are going on Sydney, that you said that you could live there and, and work there, those are. So that's not anything like. Totally like, if anyone was told like, they have all those apartments and then they have like whole fledged stores underneath. Is there going to be anything like that in that area?
Well, yeah, so. So just out of the Haven Apartments, which are on the north side of Ruby Creek here. Between this area and Albertson's, Kistat Transit is purchasing all of that property for a, a big parking ride transit facility. But the frontage along Sydney is part of our Ruby Creek sub area plan. And all of that is designated for mixed use development. I think it's five square mixed use development. And so the idea. And so the idea with Sydney is we've got a lot of apartments worth of the creek that are in walking distance. What will be kind of a commercial, main street, little corridor, you know, a little and so in terms of residential over retail, that's probably the most likely place outside of downtown four order that could be something that happened. But and then there's also a developer on the east side or the west side of Sydney that has purchased a site and is the top system restaurant or is another entity about coming in across the street from the KSAT grand department route to kind of frame off the other side of the corridor. The problem there is, is we don't, we need to build a sort of station and it's sort of worth five million dollars worth of infrastructure. And neither of those projects are large enough to go for that improvement. So I believe the city in the budget this year, we put money into doing kind of planning studies and really figuring out exactly what has to be built and where it needs to be built. And then we're going to potentially fund the design on the city side of the pretty steep stuff for somebody who will hold it later. And I also understand KSAT is looking at funding opportunities part of their parking lot. Dedicate the land for the station and potentially make some of those improvements as part of, they're going to have to put in the road. Take the signal for buses to get in and out. So they're going to be putting all the bikes on the groundouts along the frontage.
Good clarification on that. Was that organized? Supposed to be on the south side of Ruby Creek?
Yes, the south side of Ruby Creek, the Sydney, between Black Deck and Kansas City.
Is there a discussion? Nobody. For the gentleman that's been asking this question, all of our subarea plans are on our website. So you could go to them and see the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan and various subarea plans that may answer some some of your questions. The other thing that I just would like to say out loud is retail is important, but home people. But I do think the shopping habits of the general public have changed significantly. And I think we will see a lot more online shopping. And so I, I would expect in the near future, we're not going to see large retail. We're going to see smaller types of retail. And also with the last comprehensive plan update, we created the centers concept. And again, this goes to the gentleman's comments in that most of our centers should have amenities to meet those particular neighborhoods. And then I just can't help myself. The other thing you mentioned is Bay Street, everyone calls it Bay Street, but it's State Highway one sixty-six. So it's not going to close. And to close Bay Street takes a great deal of effort on the part of who's ever closing it, whether it's the city or one of the nonprofits that's putting on the festival. It is a major transportation route for us. So I don't think we can expect to see Highway one sixty-six become conveniently walkable.
With that said, though, the downtown subarea plan, there's a lot of things adjacent to Bay Street that are creating pedestrian spaces. So we're doing the plaza, the event center, the KSAT bank. And then we, we planned more of a, a water-facing side of the downtown block for extending.
And there's the other road back.
That becomes more of a problem out of the Bay Street zone on the backside of our current downtown area.
So we're also going to unfold letter E discussion on the city of what our store water and water ship comprehensive plan. Put that on hold until next year because we're quite ready for that.
No, that sums it up. This was submitted to our department really based on a variety of factors. Of course, it's asked us to hold on to this. We're going to, we probably install that works. Believe that's what they plan to do. So then over the following couple of months, I think we're this is more so we'd like to bring back what's ready.
And then the last item on tonight's agenda is the January twenty twenty-three meeting. And my conversation with Jim earlier tonight or today was that there may not be agenda items and would you like to?
I would say that's we need to, so that will set out a notice for sure. If you don't see, if you need anything done, that's always possible. So I would, I would say you can probably get other companies.
But
I do. It has to do with the contract, of course, contract for consultants. So they were kind of rushing all this work. So having this sent into commerce, they'll request a review during environmental determinations. It's going to be seen and then about that.
The next person.
We'll, we'll introduce that interview. The issue last time. Again, they wanted to have this adopted by the here, so the contract is fair. We could not for our own newspaper writers, we would not be able to publish a public character type role. So that's why it was handled here. Again, based on more it just makes more sense to hold on to it.
Everybody has your. All right, I see you then. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Oh, John, raise up.
That's okay. I've, I've, I've had some difficulty with audio tonight. I don't know about you, Dave. Did you have some difficulty with audio? That may be something we want to look at. If Dave had the challenge, I had the challenge. We may need to look at how audio gets taken in, in, in the chambers. So just a heads up, that's all.
And I think it has a lot to do with how you hold your microphone close to your mouth. And I don't know if I get closer to this, it's kind of want to click to you. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, well, yes, you were, you were good. So maybe it's riding the microphones a little more next, next time. We'll, we'll check it out. Thank you.
All right. Dave, did you have anything?
No, I'm good. I agree with Joe. Some of the audio was difficult, particularly for the public member in the audience.
It's done. Thanks so much. So it's next to be this adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.